Fledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor sends his apologies. He is not here this evening. He has a personal matter he needs to attend to, so let's see, School Committee Chair report, I guess we're, there won't be one. Mr. Stevens, the Resource Committee?
Nothing at this time.
School building needs?
Nothing at this time.
And is it the Policy Committee?
Sally.
Sally.
So you may have noticed in your packet, it was about maybe half an inch thicker than usual. We have wanted to thank with Paula Giaquinto for doing an absolutely excellent job of policy review. So we are going to be going over these policies one by one. Some, well, I'll let you guys explain when the time comes, but we have some to approve and move along to their next reading, some you can just take right out of your policy book. And we really focused on the, let's see, the forty-two-hundred, anyways, two separate sections, but I'm sure you noticed that this was an unusual, unusually rich harvest of policy review.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. The Student Support Committee, Jean?
Ms. LaBelle Pierce? We just met tonight before this meeting, and we spent time talking about curriculum materials for drug abuse education, and we directed the superintendent to form a committee to address really the new legislation and provide us with some opportunities or some ideas to look at about drug abuse curriculum. It's really critical that the school system be able to offer information about a variety of drugs, but I think especially in light of the legalization ballot question. So, we did that. We also got an update about the vigorous MCAS testing schedule that starts in what, in February, basically with registration of materials, and got an update on that. We were going to cover the Pittsburgh High School Band and how to take it to the next level, how to continue to grow in the future, but we're tabling that to our next meeting, so if people saw that on the agenda item, we are going to be talking about that at the next item. But I will just add that if you haven't gotten your gifts wrapped, you can go to Sears Town, the mall at Whitney Field, and Pittsburgh High School Band has a wrapping booth, and you can, yeah, yeah. People show up with bags and bags. And it's a great fundraiser.
When is it?
It really runs throughout all the day and night. There are people from, there are people there all day. I will say, every once in a while, there's a random time where you might not see somebody there because, like, coming up, there are band concerts for both the high school and the middle school, so probably those will be tough to get, you know, to get employees for, or volunteers, I should say, not employees. But anyway, it's great, fun thing to do. You can avoid all the hassle of wrapping and give it to the band to do.
So the people who do the wrapping are these parents and other?
And students. There's, boy, there's one student in particular, Matthew, I don't know his last name, but, boy, he is there all the time. And he, single-handedly, is fundraising for the band, but it's...
And is it a donation, or so much a package?
There actually are very modest prices, you know, like, three dollars, four dollars for boxes. We give you the box and tissue paper and joyful wrapping paper. And there's Hanukkah paper, so, you know, any, anything you're celebrating, we can wrap it for you.
Excellent.
They've been doing it for quite a few years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Festive as paper.
So sorry about that.
Good, good job.
Okay. School Personnel Committee and Executive Committee, the Mayor's, did you want to?
Well, but School Personnel, we are going to be meeting Friday afternoon?
Yes.
At two o'clock, in the mayor's office?
Yes. And the Executive Committee, there is nothing to report tonight. And now, my favorite part of the meeting.
Yes, the favorite part.
To report.
So it's been a while, and I apologize about that, but, let's see, towards the end of November, we had the Unified Basketball game. So the Unified Basketball team is a part of, like, the Best Buddies program at our school, and they ended their season, their season undefeated, seven oh. Yeah. I actually went to one of their games. They play amazing. It was, it was great. It was great. It was great. And then, so, before our Thanksgiving pep rally, we had the Thanksgiving competition. I don't know if you guys are aware. Yeah. Okay. And sadly, the seniors did not win this year, but the juniors took the crown on that one, followed by the seniors, the freshmen, and then the sophomores got last place. And then on Thanksgiving, as many of us know, so, we won the can drive this year, Pittsburgh, with two thousand three hundred and fifty-three cans being lemmster. It's a great way to give back to the community as well. Let's see, on December tenth, will mark the beginnings of the AP Saturday sessions. These are, yeah, these are really, like, they're really good for giving students an edge in their AP classes. I've gone to a few, and they're really beneficial, so hopefully, we'll have a big turnout at school. Let's see, so, parent-teacher conferences begin on Wednesday, I believe, the seventh, and there's going to be a lot of volunteers there from the high school, and hopefully, parents and students will also make a big appearance there. Let's see, so, at the beginning of, at the beginning of the year, the class of 2017 was given the task of getting to ninety percent in, of the class applying to college. And I'm glad to say that they actually surpassed that, and ninety-five percent of us applied to college.
Wow.
I think that deserves a round of applause.
And this happened recently, so, we recently found out that four students in Pittsburgh High School became Coca-Cola Scholars, semifinalists.
That's amazing.
And, I mean, it's out of ninety thousand applicants, only two thousand five hundred get accepted, so to have four Pittsburgh High School students, it's amazing.
That is just so beautiful.
Actually, Nazine, actually, Nazine was one of them as well.
Oh, very nice.
And do you remember what the, it's, if you get it, if you win, it's, what is it, twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
I think so.
Four years of college.
Yeah, it's great.
That's impressive. Yeah, very nice.
That's it.
It's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent news from the student report. Okay. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes from the School Committee?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will not be having executive session tonight. Are there any communications?
I have, thank you. So, there are posters in this school, and there will be in other schools, Be Positive Therapy Pets and Community Education. Did our first community read at Pittsburgh Public Library on Saturday from ten-thirty to eleven, I'm sorry, ten-thirty to noon. We had three therapy pets, and we had over eighteen kids.
Wow.
And the vast majority were from Pittsburgh Public Schools who had seen our flyer, and so their parents came, and we talked to them, and we had middle schoolers reading graphic novels aloud, and we had little four-year-olds who, you know, could talk about pictures, but it was, it was really sublime, and I am, I am so pleased. And if people want to visit with our therapy pets, we will be at Barnes and Noble on Saturday, December tenth, from ten to ten. The humans will be doing the gift wrapping to benefit the program, and we will have many, many therapy pets there, including Gypsy Gold, our dwarf miniature horse, and she will be there at four o'clock. Will also be at the university this week. But all these Pittsburgh school kids coming to read aloud, boys, girls, everyone. So we'll be there the first Saturday of the next month and every month since. Thanks.
Great. It's a great program.
Thank you.
Sally, are you going to send notices every month to schools?
I'm going to send notices every month, and every month we'll have a theme, so we'll have January New Year and February Valentine's Day and, and like that. Yeah, believe me, I'm, I'm typesetting like crazy right now.
I would add one. Yesterday, Sunday, sorry, it already feels like a long week. The Girls on the Run program that's come and presented, they did their five K yesterday, and, you know, there are so many events that I go to, and I am so proud to be a parent of children in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And this was another one of them. Just great young, young women, and they had decorated their ugly sweaters. They, they didn't just buy them, they decorated them at this program that they all did, and there was such solidarity for these girls. Couple of principals there, Mr. Thompson ran.
Really?
And I know Mr. Aranda was there. I don't know if he ran, but, but it was, and, you know, the kids were just so excited to see him and crowd around, and, and I know, I don't know all the coaches, but I know, obviously, Mrs. Teringney and Mrs. Reed, they were spirited and just joyful. So, just another great program, and Pittsburgh kids representing the city really well, so.
It's a great group of girls.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All right. At this point, we would welcome public comment, if there is any. Seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Ravenel?
Okay, thank you. I have some announcements to make. One is, it's hot off the press. For the third year in a row, Pittsburgh High School has made the top ten percent of schools in the Washington Post.
Great.
For having a rigorous academic curriculum and the most AP courses per the population of the school.
Wow.
So, when you think, not courses that AP students taking a class, but when you think of where we were, five or six years ago, where we had a very small group of students taking AP courses, this is quite an honor. So I already got a call tonight from the Sentinel, and they had already seen it online and wanted to know about it. They'll be talking to Jeremy, so I'm expecting more. But it's just, you know, it's a niche of something that we do, and we do a lot of different kinds of things, and that's just one of them, but it's really nice to see that they're recognized for that. Also, I think, you know, you probably know by now that we're kind of at the forefront of the whole social-emotional issue. We have been for the last year or so. I presented, I was on a panel last week at Devon's with Cliff Chong from the Department of Education and Mary Skipper, the Superintendent of Schools from Somerville, and we were presenting on district-level innovation on social-emotional learning. So it really gave me an opportunity to, I'm sorry, district-level innovation on student-centered learning was last week. And it really gave me a chance to talk about the variety of ways in which our teachers and our schools and the district tries to identify the multiple strengths that our students have, and then develop and create opportunities for them to excel. I talked a lot about the Ally Program, the Middle School STEM Program, the Honors Academy. There was just a lot of interest. I had handouts, and people came up and asked me later for more information. So that was one piece. And then today, even given the bad weather, I had invited a team from Crocker to present at Assabett Valley Voc Tech School on innovation in social-emotional learning. And Adam Renda was there today with Georgia Fahy and Christine, Christina Gerard. They were incredible. They were three different schools presenting, and of course, I'm biased, but I, I think they knocked it out of the park. I mean, they really did. People were just astounded at the systematic effort that was going on at Crocker, you know, and I think I handed out copies of the slides. Lots of people after, asking for the slides, asking about these different initiatives. And really, Adam was able to, you know, to talk about where the school was and where they've come from, and there was, a lot of the presentations were about, if you can address the social-emotional issues in a school or with students, the learning comes along. But it was just really well done. I've got to tell you, I was so proud of them, and sent the whole, and it wasn't, they were representing the whole staff, so that's the other thing. It wasn't just, here are three people who did this. They were very clear about, this is, everybody's on board, and the only way to move a school forward like that is to have everybody on board. So it was just another one of those great moments. And John Doria, who Paula knows, and the name would probably be familiar to you too, Jean, he is the president of Teachers Twenty-One, which is a massive professional development company. He said at the end, he said, "In this presentation, there were probably a hundred takeaways that I could bring to any other school."
Wow.
That they, a hundred, he used it, because I asked him, I said, "Did you say ten?" And he goes, "No, a hundred different." So, he spoke to Adam later, and he wants to come into a site visit at Crocker, and he said, "What you're doing here needs to be spread around. Either you need to write about it, Adam," and Adam's working on his doctorate, "you need to write about it, or you need to get somebody else to do that." So, it was just a, a nice way to spend the morning that looked like it was going to be treacherous. So that, that's it. So in terms of things going on, some of us, I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to go to Mckay for the grand opening of the Mckay Library, but it was during the day, so I figured people might not have had a chance. We did cover this already, but I thought it was important to bring Cian Goodlett here with Lourdes. Cian, is the, is your title the librarian, or you must have a more substantial title?
My title is the interim dean of the library and academic sports.
Okay, so Cian and Lourdes, if you'll come up. Cian approached Mckay last year and asked me and said, "We'd really like to go into the library at Mckay and really give it an overhaul, not just physically for the facility, but the books, the materials, everything else." So it's been an ongoing project with multiple reams of books, and I'll let them talk more about it, but I wanted a chance personally to say thank you to Cian and all of the people behind the scenes, because there was a whole crowd of folks there, and then to give all of you a chance to, to thank him personally and hear about this library transformation. So, take it away.
Sure.
So I, I think we want to do a couple of things here tonight. I'd like to lay out for you the, the actual project that we conducted, and, and to talk a little bit about future needs, all with an eye toward building a greater collaboration between the university and certainly the Mckay Arts Academy, but, but the whole of the Pittsburgh Public School District. The project itself was, was one that really took hundreds of hours for both my staff and the Pittsburgh Public School staff, and it required sort of three flavors of work that you can see up here in front of you. The first is, is physical renovations. We completely rethought the space, drew new floor plans for it, added carpet, end caps, redid the shelving, all kinds of things, in order to, to have a better flow for the space in order for, for the students to have discreet work areas and so forth. But the larger part of the work was, was the second task, which was the physical collections work. And there, we took all of the books, fifty-one-hundred books. We removed them from the school, we brought them back to the university, we cleaned them up, we sorted them, we weeded out old things, we replaced some of them, and then ultimately, we spent the bulk of our time cataloging all of these. And, and that brings me to the, the last bit of, of what we did there. So there was, there was a lot of backend systems work that we had to do in order to complete this project, not the least of which was, was the cataloging work. We've actually extended the site license for our catalog to include, to incorporate the Mckay Arts Academy, and, and that is an ongoing commitment of the university.
Wow.
At the same time, we've, we've created an online searchable public access catalog, so there is, there is an OPAC here that, that the students can search. It's, it's scaled down, obviously, from a university's standpoint, but it, it enables the students to search the, the catalog and to find out what items are in, what items are out, and, and ultimately to get more familiar with the use of, of the library. The end product, which, if you want to advance one slide here, is...
I just want to insert here that we wanted to make sure that the final product of, of the library would, would really reflect what teachers and students felt that it was needed for our library to be, they used to be maximized. So we began this project by doing a survey and asking students and staff, if you had the ideal library, what are some of the components that we should include? So, a lot of the things that you will see really reflect the voice of our community, where teachers and a lot of students said that they envisioned having different areas where they could come in and work in a small group, or where a student would have a little more of a private area to work with, with a classmate, or to read alone. So you will see that we heard their suggestions and incorporated that into the project. And I want to also indicate that we didn't plan the outfit, so we just matched as a coincidence.
It was an accident, that's true. So you don't get to see the full scope of it here, but you can, you can see that we added carpeting and spaces for the students to, to be comfortable in, in reading. There's a stacks area off to the back there, but we added a whole bunch of, of book bins for the K through four students so that they can approach and rifle through them for the picture books. I mean, it really is a much more functional space and a, and a space that, at the end of the day, is going to receive the support of the university going forward, and especially in terms of the maintenance of, of the catalog and such. So it's, it's much more warm and inviting, and, and the, the work that you see here, it's, it's almost certainly not the end of, of the collaboration. And in fact, if we can go one slide ahead...
Well, the art, before you leave, the artwork is new too, right?
Some of it is, we, we touched up bits of it, but a lot of that was actually existing in there.
It was, some of it was unfinished.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so Elise Cranston, our elementary art teacher, did finish, you know, most of it, and we still have an area that will be our next phase to complete the, the murals.
And there, we're going to have the collaboration of the Pittsburgh Art Museum, and some of the staff there, they're going to be helping us gather some folks to, to do some interesting artwork there. So the second part of what we wanted to engage in a conversation with you all about here was, was this bit, the, the future needs of the Mckay Arts Academy Library, and frankly, if you will, all the district's libraries. Again, we really want to deepen the collaboration between the university and Pittsburgh Public Schools, and, and I think that the university can do that. So I'll, I'll speak to the first bit there by, by providing, hopefully, some services on an ongoing basis that revolve around things like stacks maintenance and, and shelf reading, but, but much more to the point, the maintenance of the integrity of the collection that we have cataloged for, for the school. So again, we'll have about five thousand books that are cataloged. And then, future forward, the, the addition of volumes to that collection. That all takes a tremendous amount of behind-the-scenes work, that, you know, you don't see when you walk into a library, the books on the shelf are waiting there for you, but, but you've got a small army of people who are working to make that happen every day.
I think one of the advantages of having the collection cataloged is that we now have a clear picture of the areas that we need to focus on to improve the collection, to make it a vibrant, appropriate collection for an elementary, middle school levels.
Yeah, for, for the first time, you'll be able to do real and serious collection development analysis. You'll be able to figure out where your strengths are, where your weaknesses are, where you need to order, where you need to cull. You can figure out in an instant the age of the collection and things like this, right? But, but future forward, we would, we would also want to be talking about collaborating on things like instruction services here. And instruction, it, it really is what makes the library come alive. So that involves everything from, from instructing students on just how to navigate a library to working with an online public access catalog, the so-called OPAC. And, and at a deeper level, for certainly the middle school students, introducing them to concepts like information literacy, so that they're able to judge what's good and what's bad information, what's, what, what information comes from a useful source, in other words. And then, and then thinking more broadly about integrating library instruction into the overarching curriculum of the school.
So one of the partnerships that we're working on is evaluating how could Pittsburgh State University's library support the professional development for our, our teachers, so they could best guide our students in how to use the library. But also, we have this new project that we began, it's called the Junior Librarian, where we have a student representative from each classroom who is learning to assist our librarian. So when their class comes to the library, they will be in a more of a leadership role. It's just one way to, to encourage students to even consider, who knows, being a librarian as a career in the future. But also, an opportunity for our students to have a better, deeper understanding of the workings of a library and the incredible benefits that it will bring to their lives as learners.
At, at the end of the day, we'd, we'd even be looking to develop a relationship that, that allowed us to write common grants, that pursued things like, as you see here, Common Reads programs, professional development for the staff, which Lourdes has already mentioned, as well as, as larger literacy campaigns. So, there's a tremendous amount of work to do here in the future, and, and I guess I'd ask the, the School Committee to be thinking about commitments that, that the district can, can make toward this sort of work, not only at Mckay, but, but at all of the district libraries. This, at the end of the day, is, is, this is the important work. What we've done here is to restart a library, but going forward, we need to be thinking about a sort of longer-lived life here to, to these libraries. So happy to take any questions.
Questions? I have to say, I, I think, just to be candid, I, I feel like with Mckay as an innovation school, it's always a little different to me about where, how, how, how much we help to direct what goes on. And I think, well, one of the commitments that we all have to make as a school committee is that we're not going to let a school not have a library. And to go as long as, you know, an institution might without really a working library, we have to really take a stand to say that that's just not going to happen. And it's just beautiful, that, those pictures are beautiful. I got a chance to peek in it. It's, and it's a wonderful collaboration, and I, I really like your message, because I think somehow we're, if we can take that collaboration and really kind of benefit the whole district, that's a direction that we really need to move to. And maybe it's the kind of thing where we could, you know, we do have a Student Support Subcommittee, where maybe we could bring this up as an agenda item, just to really kind of look at across the board, where, where are our facilities at in terms of volumes, or in terms of access, information literacy? Where is that happening in the curriculum? I think that that would be good to just kind of centralize and get a good feel for those, yeah, I guess a needs-based kind of assessment of where do we go next. But I, I think it's wonderful, and I, and I'm so glad those students have such a beautiful space and a lot of access to materials.
Do you have anybody working in the library presently? Do you have a librarian?
So, we have a paraprofessional.
Mm-hmm.
Who works, I said, I said, library, library tech, I guess would be the correct title.
Our kids scheduled it, you know, I go back to when our, every school had their librarian. It was a, a period where every child in the school, at least once a week, was brought in for a library period, and starting right from first grade, and got a chance to really learn the library and how to find a book. And we need really get, get back to that where the kids are getting in. We got to a point where it was up to the teacher to sign their kids into the library. Well, some kids, some teachers didn't want to take time away from something else, so they would never take a library period, and those kids would go along and never really get to see the, the library and what was available. So...
Our students now are scheduled to go into the library and do so, and the improvements of the library are significant. of the library are significant. And I want to really plant in your minds that it's not just the accessing the library and having access to books, but the quality of the collection is really what I have learned through this process that is something to focus on.
Well, and I guess I'd add to that, on your original point, that it is a question of, if you will, skills and ability here to be able to give the students the kind of instruction and the kind of help that they need when they come into a library. The difference between a paraprofessional and an actual librarian is that librarians are going to be skilled in these various instruction methods, right? Not simply kind of nuts and bolts of how to use a library, but actual information literacy and preparing students to do the kind of research that they're going to do as they move into high school and ultimately, hopefully, on into college. So that staffing question, I think, is a key one, and it's a good one to be asking after. There's also the basics of the collection itself, which requires maintenance. It's hard to pin this down, the standards of libraries, they aren't clear-cut, but I can give you some numbers. You should be looking at having anywhere between 19 and 27 books per pupil in a school. So you multiply that out here, and I'm going to take an average of those two numbers because it's a K through eight school, you're actually looking at a collection of upwards of 16,000 books. This school, for the moment, once we get through cataloguing by the end of this upcoming calendar year, will only have 5,000. So there has to be a kind of ongoing view toward building a collection, as well as maintaining. You're going to have loss, you're going to have damage, and things like this. So you're going to want to be thinking, future forward, about building these collections and maintaining them.
You know, I would like to see the kids get the instruction, and again, I go back years, you know, and we would, as sixth graders, we were brought, we walked to the library, the Pittsburgh Public Library, again, after we had had instruction and so forth, and we would go. And then we would get a library card during that time when we would go. So we would, every student in Pittsburgh would get a, as a sixth grader, would get a library card to the Pittsburgh Public Library. And I don't know why we can't do some of those things still.
Well, Lourdes and I are working on library cards for McKay, so everybody should be getting a library card. We've got some backend technical things we've got to work out first.
We know that this is a process, and this was just phase one, and I think we have a good vision of what our next strategic steps will be, and I can't tell you how exciting it is to walk by the library and see students being there, wanting to be there, and looking for books, and asking about authors and titles, it's just really exciting.
I would like to get back, see the kids using the library. We got to a point where we started, the kids, the library period was a time, that's where the computers were, and they were going in to get on the computers, and library science wasn't being taught. So we need the computer lab, but we also need the kids to get in and experience using the library.
Yeah, and if I could actually just make one plug for the printed word. Cognitive science actually shows that the brain interacts differently with the printed word on a page versus a screen. There's a much deeper level of reading that takes place, an ability to interrogate a source that really the screen doesn't do for you. And if you think about it, actually, a book, a printed book, is a sophisticated technology, whereas a computer, it's nothing more than an old-fashioned medieval scroll, you're just sort of unraveling from one end to the next.
Sean, my wife has given up her Kindle and has gone back to reading the book.
Good for her.
And I would just like to thank you both. I think, Seen especially, I know all of what you do at the Pittsburgh State University Library, and the fact that you've not only engaged, you know, you yourself have engaged, but you've engaged a lot of the librarians and the staff in this project, I think, is admirable for you, as well as all of your staff, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. They were thrilled to do it, absolutely thrilled, I have to say.
And I think that if we could, you know, replicate this at the other libraries in the district, I think that would be amazing.
You have the lead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, should we recognize our...
Yes.
Yes.
Would you like to do so?
Nazanin, you came in late.
Yes, we were just going to recognize.
We don't want to chastise you for coming in late.
You missed our Coca-Cola accolades.
We're so glad you're here.
Congratulations.
But I know you probably have some things you'd like to add to the report.
Well, okay, so one thing that I would add that I'm just in my, just in my current everything clearly, but our attendance for a senior year, I think there's a lot going on for seniors, and they're super stressed, so our attendance is 80 or lower, at least for this week it has been, which is not good at all. But tomorrow, actually, we're having a meeting with the juniors and seniors in regards to the recent issues that have been going on, because I don't know if you've looked at social media, but after Thanksgiving game, before the Thanksgiving game, the Leominster High School painted our rock blue. And so after that, my senior class and the junior class began to bicker within each other about the rock. Instead of just letting Leominster be, we started to fight with each other about the rock and what's going on. So Mr. Roach and Mr. Dean made the call to have a meeting tomorrow with the juniors and seniors to help bring us together, because it's just dividing the school apart, and it's not working, like it's, and we have so much more left, and not working together won't help us at all. So hopefully tomorrow, it'll be beneficial to talk to each other and figure things out.
Good.
Yes.
Well, those are all good lessons in what the rest of your life is going to be like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so good. And congratulations on being a finalist.
We all want to congratulate you. We applauded you when you weren't here, so I think we should applaud you now that you are.
Do you know the names of the other students offhand?
Yes.
Could we say the names so that everybody at home can know who they are?
Yes. Um, Chalena Gordon, Sophia Goncalves, Gabby Upson, and Nazanin Beji.
All right, yeah, and Gabby was one of the speakers, too, for opening day for the teachers, so thank you very much.
Very impressive.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So before you, you have a request, just a request to start looking at a field trip for the band, the Pittsburgh High School Band, and they would like to, I think this is a return trip, to Hershey Park in New York on May 5th and 7th. So this is only the request to start the process, and that's an action item on your, on the agenda. Tabitha, with members of the band, is at Pittsburgh State University tonight, which is why she could not be here to bring that forward. And I think there must be, yeah, there's a field, all the information is on that field trip request form. Any questions about that?
Is it sort of on the same ideas when they went to Disney World?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it always falls on the gala weekend.
The what?
It always falls on the weekend of the gala.
Oh, well, we shouldn't approve it then. Yeah, well, you know, so, and I don't know whether, it sounds like that's just the weekend that it has to be.
Right.
Yeah, there's an alternative. Related to that, because there are some donations here, and there's quite a substantial donation of musical instruments. And if you look at the last name in that action item, it's Carol Ann Baer. Carol Ann is the one who gave the dance lessons as tickets to the, as a prize to the gala, and she and some other people have made other donations of books and other things. And these are friends of hers who did a drive to get people who had musical instruments that weren't being used. So five clarinets, this sounds like the 12 Days of Christmas, five clarinets, four trumpets, two saxophones, one flute, a French horn, two drum sets, one small guitar, and one and a quarter-sized cello, for a total of about $1,200 worth of instruments. So I particularly want to thank her, because she's a good friend and always thinking of what she can do to help. There are also donations for Thanksgiving baskets, you'll see $500 estimate from Coakley Family Dental, from Spatafor Oil, another donation, for the Pittsburgh High Athletic Fund, and from the Wellness Initiative for Student Success, $3,000 from Ad Care Education. So those are some great contributions that help our kids and help our school district. I think, that's it, and then there's that slew of policies.
Sure, I think everyone has had a chance to look over all of these policies. We do have a number of deletions, and the deletions really had to do with redundancy, had to do with, out of code, out of, not in compliance with, you know, current law, even custom. Paula Juana, do you want to add to any of this, and did anyone have any particular questions about any of these policies that we're looking at?
So, I'm sorry to interrupt, could I, is it completely out of order to go back for a minute to ask students a question? Is that...
I think we could entertain it.
Could I, just since you're here, since they haven't left, you have a policy at the school to not have cell phones?
Yes.
Right? And you had mentioned the social media piece, and social media is just tough all around, right? So I know where I teach, it's a huge issue. It's, I think it's a huge issue in every school. But, so are phones, and is that working at the school, that you, that phones aren't coming out, or is it, is it tough to kind of hold that line with kids? Do you take your phones out?
Be honest.
Don't make those stuff up. No, no, all right. Is that exacerbating the issue with social media, or is that...
I think when we're told not to take our phones, we want to take our phones out even more, because what happens is that at school, people tend to have study labs, and in the study labs, they like to listen to music so they can take out all the other noises. But because it's a policy set out through the entire school, a teacher can't break that policy, even if it's for a study lab. So students are tending to not rebel against it, like, we respect it, like, in the hallways, the phones are now out, and it's actually really helpful, because like, there's no traffic in the halls, everyone in class is paying attention, there's no phone ringing, all phones are put away, because teachers are actually taking initiative and like, making sure that people follow that rule. But like, when it comes to like, areas where people are trying to focus by themselves and downtime to themselves, people tend to take it out regardless, but they try to hide it. So yes, it's very effective, but like, in regards to like, being at a study lab and trying to like, focus, so like, people can listen to music, I feel like maybe extended...
I was just curious, because I think that's, kids are talking to each other so much all the time, but, and I'm sorry to...
No, I just want to comment on that, what I find is interesting is, I'm on Facebook with nieces, nephews, and things like that, and I do see them posting things during school hours.
Oh, they're posting...
So there are, somehow those phones are getting out and being used, so, I mean, I think as much as some of you, you know, you do respect it, I think more kids than not are using their phones.
To add to, like, this whole cellphone thing, I think teachers and like, the vice principals and Mr. Roach, they're doing a good job enforcing the rules. I think it's just like, sometimes, students do kind of get away with using their phones, like, by hiding them, so I think that might be an issue as well. But during lunch is the only time we're allowed to actually use it.
So you put up postings during lunchtime?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
If I may, I actually talked to Jeremy about that. I asked him how it was, he had just, it was on a day he'd been in 25 classrooms, and he said that in those 25 classrooms, he only saw two classrooms where, so, and he's, you know, he's a principal, his eyeballs, he's got eagle eyes. But, you know, but the thing is, he felt it was consistently being enforced. Now, any of us who were teenagers at one time, who think that all the teenagers in a school of 1,200 are going to be doing the thing, the right thing, all the time, you know, that's just not how it works. But the alternative was, there were no, there were no guidelines, and they were out all the time, in the hallways, in the classrooms, and everything else. So forgiven the first year, you know, I think we've come a long way. And I know when you thought, when you mentioned about the idea of maybe, you know, changing it a little bit, you looked at me. And I would say that, you know, I know that there's a student advisory group that a principal meets with a group of students, for the very purpose of saying, okay, how's this working? And I know that your principal would be somebody who would be open to feedback. But I know, I've been in that school quite a bit, and the hallways used to be plugged up with people leaning up against the wall on their phone, when people were trying to change classes, and I think that's what you were talking about, is that that part's gone, and people are moving and going to the next class. So, you know, like anything, you know, there's a, there's a philosophy behind it, right? That's the goal. The goal is, we've got to get people to be focused on what they're supposed to do while they're there, and, you know, it's going to be, it'll be imperfect, but hopefully it'll be better than it was, and if there's something about it that's not working for students, or that's not working for the school, then, you know, there's a vehicle to talk about it and share.
Right.
I think just trying to get used to it, like, if anyone's complaining, it's only because they're not used to it yet, but once they get used to it, and once it becomes a normal rule for them, everyone will be fine with it, because it's working really well.
Yeah, at the beginning, there was a lot more complaint about it, but now I think everyone's kind of settling in and getting used to it, yeah.
Excellent. All right, yeah, thank you.
No, that's fine, thank you. Kelly, did you want to take these one by one, or how do you want, or do you want to just...
Oh, no. So...
I'll be here till 10 o'clock.
So what I've done is, I've partitioned these for first reading deletions, so let's do the deletions first. But is it okay if I read this, I mean, you can...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, so, if it's okay if I kind of guide us through this, so we are going to, we are going to approve the deletions for Professional Staff Ethics Policy Number 4204, the Out-of-State Travel for Administrators and Teachers Policy Number 4205, because we are already doing that. The Superintendent Recommendation to Teacher Fluency Policy Number 4206, this was out of date. On the next page, 16779, delete the Agenda Format Policy 6506, I believe this was a redundancy, and then delete the Agenda Format Requests to be Included on the Agenda Policy 6506.01, another redundancy. And then finally, down to 16-784, we are going to delete the Special Emergency Meeting Policy Number 6511, because that is covered in another policy. Right? So if our acting chair makes a motion that we move forward with those deletions, which have already been approved by our policy Subcommittee?
I would entertain such a motion.
I'll make a motion to delete...
Second.
All in favor?
Now we move back, if you turn back to your, your third, yeah, your third page of your agenda, we have first readings. So let's do first reading for Number 16-772, and that is approving the first reading of Classroom Supervision Policy Number 4203. Then move down to 776, we're going to approve the first reading of School Committee Operations Internal Communications Policy Number 6201. Now, this is a new policy, which was brought to us by our superintendent, which really covers open meeting law, details, which are of course covered in master general law. Juana, anything else to add to that?
No, no, it just, I mean, it covers the email and any form of written communication. I think it brings clarity to that.
Right, so if we decide that, you know, we're going to build an auditorium, we all have to do it here in open meeting.
Right, can't text it to you.
No, anyway, so the next one is 777, Time and Location of Regular School Committee Meeting Policy Number 6502, this is covered in another policy, doesn't need to be its own policy. Then we have on the next page, 778, which is approve the first reading of the Negotiation Session Policy. I believe this was something else that was already previously covered, is that correct?
Yeah, it was just kind of adopted as...
Oh, that's right, that was the one with the free, the dates that were...
Dates.
So, right, we didn't have that, those details put in. Now we go down to 781, which is first reading of the Agenda Format Order of Business Policy, and this is the agenda policy I referenced. Then we have 782, which is first reading of the Voting Method Policy 6507. Then we have 782, which is First Reading of the Voting Method Policy 6507, ditto. 783, First Reading of the Quorum Policy 6508. And I think that is it for our first reading, so I guess we can entertain a motion.
Could I entertain a motion? Somebody like to make that motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, if we return back to our third page, and go down to 16-771, now, this is the second reading of the Participation in Activities After Absence or During Suspension Policy Number 5109. This is the policy where we revise the first paragraph to make it excruciatingly and indelibly clear, that if the student is absent on the last day of school, oh, students absent from school during the day are not eligible to attend school functions in the afternoon or evening unless specifically approved by administration, period. If the student is absent on the last day of school prior to a weekend event, this rule will be enforced. So, and then the, the regulation, this regulation didn't change, which is for the purpose of participation in school-sponsored events. A student is recorded absent from school if arriving after or dismissed prior to 50% of the school day. This applies to practices, competitions, meetings, games, performances, social events, and interscholastic events, and those who are suspended are not eligible to attend any activities. So, very, very clear, and we will be adopting that after we are approving this, and that brings us to the end of our 23.
That was the one I had problems with, the last meeting.
It was.
Yeah, and it's good, there's one little thing in there, and I wouldn't, it would be something that'd have to be handed, handled administratively, because I, I can remember when we had one particular star athlete who used to show up before 11 o'clock in the morning because he had a game that night, and he slept in and got his rest, and, oh, I don't know if we run into that anymore, but that used to happen, show up before the half-day and not to get too tired. Just a little.
There, there's a movie in that, Mr. Stevens.
There you go.
What you've just described, that sounds like a movie to me.
All right, so do I hear a motion to accept 16771, and which, is that?
So moved.
Second, okay.
Second reading.
Second, somebody second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Okay. Remember all of the policies, right?
That's it. Thank you, Juana, thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. I think we went a little bit out of order here, I guess, there wasn't any public testimony before, I'm assuming I would entertain any public testimony at this point in time, none heard, and I think we need to move on to the other action items?
I just have one question on 16-766. Did I understand that you're saying this is not to approve the actual trip, just to let us know about the trip?
Yes.
But the, that action item is saying it's to. Recommended, okay.
Recommends to allow them to plan, yeah. It's confusing, because we do two things. We say, okay, yeah, go ahead and plan, and then they'll come back, and you'll approve it.
Okay, all right.
Right, so why don't we take, do I hear a motion to approve 16-766?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then if we could maybe take 16767 and 7, 768, 16, wait a minute, I'll get there in a minute, 16-767 through 16-770, can we?
Yes, we can, I make a motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I believe the last action item we have is 16-785, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills. And if there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well done, Dr. Walsh, we're setting records here, wait until Mr. Stevens, Ali hears about that.
The pressure's on.
Almost speaking to Ali about it.